We'll call the meeting to order. It's good to see everyone here tonight. I'm sorry we're running just a little bit late getting started tonight. Our closed session ran just a little bit long, but I do appreciate your patience with us and thank you for being here. Uh, the, uh, we'll call the meeting to order. I need approval. Well, see, before we do approval of the agenda, I think there is a, uh, an amendment or an addition to the agenda. Dr. Rice?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, Chairman Roberts. Uh, we'd like to add discussion letter I, needs-based capital grant, uh, needs-based capital funds, uh, to the agenda.
Okay. So that will be discussion item I, discussion of schools' needs-based capital grant. Discussion item I. So do I have a, a, a motion for approval of the agenda?
I make a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Do I have a second?
I'll move second.
All in favor?
Uh.
Uh, approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda will, uh, item A will be approval of regular session minutes for July 25th, 2022. Approval of lease agreement with Insight Human Services, Junior Blast. Do I have a, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Uh.
That leads us to discussion agenda, item A, discussion of summer school. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, board members. I just want to give you a quick update of our summer school efforts for this past year. And I just want to touch on a couple of highlights quickly. The high schools were able to rebound 104 credits. I appreciate you all approving of this program. It helps us keep our graduation rates up as we are moving forward and keeping our kids moving on that four-year cohort. Middle school, we had 107 students to voice that they were interested in participating, but only 101 total did, but their attendance rate was extremely good. And then, when it came to our summer career academy, this was something new. The thing that I really liked about this was that we had, um, a homeschool student to participate. We had a couple of private school students to come and see what we're about within our CTE programs. We got to partner our CTE teachers with some of our reg ed teachers and expose these students to pathways so that they could use the saw and the tape measurers and do some building within the carpentry. They got to do digital design and build virtual worlds with Mr. Mundon. And then health science, they did a forensics lab. And we got some really neat opportunities. They got to do coding, um, and use the Sphero's down the halls at West. I think the teachers had a good time doing this. It worked our core teachers and our CTE teachers together. I think we developed a greater appreciation of each other in that. And then our students got to see hands-on what our pathways are about. That also led into multiple field trips the following week where they got to see the STEM programs of Forsyth Tech, the Aviation Center, the Transportation Center, and multiple businesses around Stokes County, Rural Hall, uh, and then on into a couple in Surrey as well. And we finished out that program hearing from some park rangers and enjoying Hanging Rock Park the last day. But, um, the nice thing is, is that the state has approved another round of funding and we have gotten approved of that funding. So we are good to go to continue this program through the summer of 2024. And I really do expect it to grow and I expect it to be a marketing tool for us to display what we offer that is different, to highlight there as well. And then for our elementary school, you can see the numbers that are there. You can also see that we embedded the summer reading camp um, and the summer bridge program to work with our students who needed the, the extra assistance there. And, uh, I'd like to commend Ms. McGee on her work in that to meet all the reporting requirements. I know how much goes into all of these different reports. And then the, uh, the teachers did a really good job of, of working that program as well. So overall, a very successful summer. And I'll open things up to ask if you have any questions.
The only question I have is, uh, on your field trips.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I know it says here we went to the Aviation Center and Transportation Center. How was that received? I know we had, uh, we've, we've spoken here for a couple of years now about an aviation, uh, uh, class and, and pathway in our, in our, uh, schools. How was that, how was that received amongst the, the students when they got to see that Aviation Center?
I think they were just kind of wowed by the total concept of these programs. Because, you know, a lot of times when you think about garages, um, you know, you think about the grease to the floor and then, you know, not the greatest necessarily working environment. But their facilities are so state-of-the-art and so very clean that the students were, were taken back by that. Um, the one story I would, you know, I had wanted to share with you all, there was a young man who has done, you know, okay in school. When he got in that Transportation Center, he kept asking questions. And then they were just about to blow the bus and he goes, I, I forgot something I wanted to ask. And so, you know, we're really out of time. And he said, but I finally found what I want to do.
Oh.
Um, so needless to say, he got to ask that last question. They went back in. Um, the entire program was, was well received. Extreme marketing, Siemens Energy, those were, um, mentioned by several of the students. But, you know, again, to say if one was, was preferred from the other, just the overall feedback was, was so positive, um, with each of the pathways. So I would say that everything there was well received.
Good. Okay.
I went, I go to church with some people whose students did the summer academy and they could not say enough wonderful things about it. And the kids were so excited every day to get on the bus and come to West Stokes to, you know, take in the academy and just every day. And the grandmother would run me down and tell me all about it. And so I was just really pleased that they, um, you know, came to it. And I feel like they'll do it again, you know, each summer. So they were very excited.
We are talking about ways, ways to expand it. Uh, I do expect more students to participate. And we've talked about what other grade levels we, we may want to include. Um, and again, I think our teachers enjoy doing it too.
Good.
So I think the staffing will go well.
Thanks for doing it.
Thanks, Doug.
Love it.
Ms. Knight?
My only question might would be how did like, um, the elementary average daily attendance, um, with the bridge program maybe compare to the last couple of years? Like was it as, as, uh, strong attendance-wise or?
So the total numbers are much lower than last year because,
Yeah.
um, we had a lot more identified and, and funding. I would say the attendance rate is very comparable.
I'm sorry, Ms. McGee, could you go to the mic so that people at home can hear?
And board, are your mics on? Everybody's mics on?
Um, for elementary, the attendance rate was pretty much the same as typical. Um, what we've seen for summer reading camps and bridge programs in the past, um, I was actually working on a report to DPI today to get that out and back to them. Um, last year is, uh, it's hard to compare to last year just because of the, the amount of kids that attended. But if we're looking in comparison to previous years before COVID,
Yeah.
then the attendance rate was comparable.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Board, any other questions for Mr. Rose? Okay. Ms. Rose, thank you. Thank you for your hard work with this program. And, uh, we do look forward to maybe expand next year. It's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, that brings us to, uh, discussion item B, discussion of employee, employee recognition program. Um, well, as Ms. Jessup is coming up, uh, back in the spring, uh, the board, we had spoke with Dr. Rice about, uh, doing a, uh, employee recognition program, uh, an employee of the month, if you will. And, um, Dr. Rice at the time had said, let's just wait and we'll try to start it in the fall. And, uh, so we spoke again a couple of weeks ago and, uh, we got Ms. Jessup busy on the, uh, program. And I think she has come up with some ideas and, uh, things that we can do with the program here. So, uh, uh, so Ms. Jessup, if you, if you would, maybe fill us in on what we've come up with.
Yes, sir.
May I help if I turn the on button?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, yes, thank you, board. And we know that one of the most important things we can do as a school district, as Mr. Robertson suggested with Dr. Rice early on, is value our employees. And we know that we have, uh, several recognitions we do on a monthly basis. And of course, we also have the Teacher of the Year, the Principal of the Year program of recognition. But we know that we have a wider span of employees that we want to be able to recognize. And so tonight, what we are suggesting is that we would put on our website a Google recommendation form that would be linked to every school and work location. It could be a nomination that would include part-time as well as full-time employees that would be eligible to be nominated. We recommend that anybody can nominate an employee for this recognition, whether it's a student, a parent, or other employees, or just the general public who've had a positive interaction with someone in our school district. And some of the suggested guidelines for this nomination would include the employee must demonstrate excellence in his or her job. They must demonstrate an attitude of collaboration and teamwork. It must be a, an employee that has made a significant contribution to the school, the district, students, employees, or the community as a whole. And then also, we want that employee nominated to be someone who enthusiastically supports the mission of our Stokes County School District. Then, once the nominations come in on a monthly basis, district-level leadership would choose the recipient of the monthly award starting in September, running through May. Principals will communicate reminders about nominating someone through our phone trees, newsletters, weekly communications. Those would be one way to get that word out there and help people to remember to send in a nomination. And then also, maybe looking into some outdoor billboard advertising through, uh, someone. This is just one possibility, Adams Outdoor, uh, which is an estimated cost when I looked into this of $4.75 a month. But a contract with an outside company who does these billboards would allow us to have other slots. We could advertise things like, for example, kindergarten registration, maybe our pre-K program, uh, free and reduced lunch program, graduations, recruitment. So it would have other uses. And then, once these nominations come in and that person is selected, then we would recognize that winner by surprising them at their school or, or their work location on possibly the Friday before your board meeting. Uh, then we could present them maybe with balloons and, you know, just have a lot of fun with it. Then maybe take a special gift to them at their work site in front of their peers. It could be like an umbrella, shirt, something with our logo on it that would just be a special gift for the recipients of this award. And then certainly, we would want them to come to your board meeting so that you could recognize them. And then they would get a second photo certificate as well as a gift card to honor that individual. So that is what we just have developed as a possibility and now would certainly welcome your comments.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jessup. I think, uh, for the board, we, uh, you know, we understand that our employees are great, right? We, we, we have the, the best staff, the best employees, uh, from top to bottom, I think, in Stokes County of any of our counties around us. We may be a little bit biased, but we feel like we do. And, uh, really what we wanted was a, a program that we could recognize that. Uh, and I think as we get into this, maybe it can grow a little bit and, uh, and it's something that offers some, uh, some pride to the, to the, to the winners, right? So, uh, we're excited about it. So we do appreciate your hard work on it, putting this together. We're, we're excited to see it come about. And, uh, we're excited to see the first winner and have them in for our meeting and, uh, be able to present them with a, and, uh, we'd even talked about maybe, uh, being able to get, and I think it says here, maybe a gift card, uh, um, I think we could probably find some restaurants in the county that would sponsor us. And, uh, whether it's, uh, three or four, five restaurants around, if they could give us a couple of meals and, um, and be able to reward them with a night out to, for dinner. I think that would be great too. I appreciate the umbrella. Uh, I like to eat pretty good. So, uh, I would enjoy the, uh, the, the meal out at night too. So, uh, if we, if we, us as board members need to go around and try to find some of those, I'd be more than happy to help with that too.
Thank you so kindly. We'll begin that partnership with our businesses. Thank you, board.
Absolutely. Ms. Ms., uh, let me, Ms. Jessup, let me ask, does any other board members have a question for Ms. Jessup?
No, thank you for starting the program. It's a very good idea.
Maybe a designated parking space up front or something too?
Yeah, I think once we get into it, we'll, we'll probably run across more and more ideas.
Yeah.
So that's great. Ms. Rogers, do you have?
I may be the one that's off the wall. I mean, billboards are great, but they're kind of few and far between certain sectors of the county.
Yeah.
I'm not against paying to have, uh, employees' face put on a bus or something, you know, vinyl wrap. I mean, you can get a fat head for your basement. Put their name up there. Hey, we're proud to have this one. And I'm serious about it. I mean, it didn't cost that much to wrap a trailer for me, so.
That's true.
You, you can't wrap a yellow bus. White bus, a- activity buses are a possibility, but yellow buses have to stay the same uniform yellow.
But we've got enough activity buses.
But we do have enough.
In every area, I mean, Piney Grove would cover the northern end and, and north, and the same with south and same with west, so.
That's true.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Goins is all over the county. We could just wrap his new truck, you know?
Yeah, right.
I think, like, like I said, I think as we get into this program, we'll come up with more, maybe more and more ideas and kind of refine a little bit. It's just a start now, but, uh,
I applaud the initiative.
Yeah, I'm anxious to see it get started and, uh, and recognize our, our staff and employees. And as, as my conversation too is, is maybe a little bit of a separate item, but, uh, during my conversations the past week or so with Ms. Jessup, um, we had, I had a, a, a friend of mine whose wife is a teacher, uh, asked me the other day that, uh, they, we see on the news so many times about, uh, open positions, uh, schools are so many open teaching positions, bus drivers. Uh, we have all these open positions and they were a little concerned that, uh, with school getting ready to start back, that, uh, you know, they, they had heard that Stokes County had so many open positions. So I inquired with Ms. Jessup about that, you know, how, how are we looking here? How are we, what's going on? And, uh, and you can correct me on my numbers a little bit, but, uh, I think the gist of it was, uh, about, uh, well, here's, here's a list has just appeared before me. Uh, vacancies update, high school, we have, uh, six vacancy. Now, this is, I think this is classroom vacancies. Is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, high school, we have six. Middle school, we have four. And elementary, we have four. That's throughout our whole district, 14 total. And you were telling me on the phone the other day that out of that, uh, 14, uh, we have prospects on maybe half of those that were in interview process.
Correct.
Uh, so over the next week or so, uh, 10 days, we're going to eliminate, uh, that 14. We'll get down to hopefully, uh, five or six, maybe seven. Okay? So, uh, we've still got three weeks until school starts. So we have a, a really good running chance that when school starts the first day, we won't have any vacancies in our, in our classrooms. We'll be fully staffed. And, uh, I know there's a lot of our neighboring counties that would love to be in that position. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Uh, that they are, they are struggling trying to find teachers. Uh, Mr. Tetter told me a while ago, we are fully staffed with bus drivers.
Woo-hoo.
Uh, so we, uh, uh, that's great. Um, um.
And have a little list of subs, I believe.
We have an increased list of people calling in, uh, wanting to substitute, and a lot of those are retired teachers. So that's encouraging.
And I will tell you from speaking with superintendents, that is unheard of right now. And so, great job by him, again, the principals. And again, thanks to the parents of our students because people want to drive our buses because for the most part, kids pretty well behave in Stokes County. And that comes from good parenting and the good people in Stokes County. We're appreciative of that as well.
Right. But I just wanted to, uh, make note of that. I thought maybe this was a good time to, to bring that up in a meeting tonight and to let the public know that, uh, we are in good shape. Uh, don't worry, we're going to have your, uh, your classroom will be covered. Uh, now, outside of the, uh, the, the classroom positions here, and I see, uh, if I'd have just read through my note a little, a little farther along, uh, eight of the 14, eight are currently interviewing, uh, six are in the process of advertising. So, uh, I feel certain that under the leadership and the guidance of Ms. Jessup, that by the time we start school, uh, we will be in very good shape. So, uh, I do want to thank everybody for their hard work in this, uh, from top to bottom. Uh, like Dr. Rice said, the principals, Ms. Jessup, all the other staff, uh, we appreciate that everybody has got their positions filled. And, um, and we're looking forward to a great year. So, parents out there, uh, students, uh, don't, uh, don't worry, we've got it covered. Right, Ms. Jessup?
Yes, sir. We've got a great team.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Jessup?
One other thing I'd like to add to that is we're, spoke with Sheriff Lemmons the other day. We are also fully staffed with SROs as one of the few school districts in the entire state of North Carolina that has an SRO in every building every day. So we are one of the few. And so, uh, again, we, we care about the students' education, we care about their safety. And that's why we believe Stokes County is a great place to send your kid to get an education because, a- and again, great partnerships with them. And that is fully staffed as well. And I'd just like to make a point of that tonight as well.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dr. Rice. Okay, we'll move on to, uh, discussion item C, discussion of lottery application for Nancy Reynolds Elementary School. Ms. Moore?
Signated it to come from the Nancy Reynolds Construction Project. And, uh, they have requested that we request $450,000. They will receive that in quarterly increments all during the year. This board has to initiate the application, then the application will go to the county commissioners and then be submitted to, uh, DPI. We've been doing this for several years, so this is just a, a format that we will, that we're continuing.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Do you got action?
Doesn't have to, but as soon as we do, if you do, it just speeds up the process. So that's just up to the board.
I think we need a motion to move it to action.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Uh.
So this will be action, agenda item C, uh, lottery application for Nancy Reynolds Elementary School. And that brings us to, uh, discussion agenda item D, discussion of policy 5240. Uh, Mr. Johnson, uh, Mr. Johnson, are you with us on the, uh?
Yeah, yes, I am.
There you are.
At the request of the board, you have for discussion the proposed revision to advertising in schools, policy 5240. The, um, the recommendations from the School Boards Association are optional and can be modified if the board so desires. Be glad to entertain any questions that board members may have.
Um, we briefly spoke on it last time, uh, Mr. Johnson, and my, um, proposal or recommendation was to leave the policy as it stood without adopting the recommendations of the school board, of the state school board recommendation. So basically, leaving everything and, uh, not adding the things that we see here with the double underlines. So those would not appear.
And do you mean that through the, the policy in the entirety or just section B?
I'm fine with it in its entirety, but definitely section B.
Okay, uh, if, if you, um, yes, it does not have to be in the policy. Those are recommendations from the School Boards Association. And, uh, so it's, it's certainly up to the board. I will say that, you know, some of the requirements in this policy are mandated by law anyway. So, um, a lot of it are OCR regulations, um, a lot of it is Title IX regulation. But you are correct, it does not have to be verbatim in the policy as recommended by the School Boards Association.
Mr. Johnson, do you see any reason that our current policy 5240 that is not inclusive of these changes is in violation of state law?
No.
Okay.
Not in violation of state law.
Is this the only?
Or federal law.
Is this the only policy we left out from last time?
Correct. There, there were three or four others that were amended, but this is the, this one is, uh, one that was not included. Now, it is in the, in the, uh, action item B, uh, the list does include 5240. So when we get to that action item, we can delete 5240 from action item B.
Mr. Johnson, on the PLS update, Spring '22 policy update, the document directly behind the, the policy in our notebooks, the tile section at the bottom of the page for 5240, each of the recommended changes does say recommended, except for two. Uh, one, it says moves old D7 to section E, I'm sorry, that is recommended. And then fixes references to policy 4720, which was required. So that second part, it does state from the School Board Association, that part is required. And then it says clarifies the language in section E that is required. It is, is it your belief that those are required or those are only recommended, uh, while the School Board Association says they're required? You're our attorney.
Well, it, it, a lot of that is, uh, renumbering and editorial revision. So we can certainly, my thought is, why don't we defer this one to the next, to the next meeting? And I will, let me provide a proposed revision that would incorporate anything that is mandatory under state or federal law.
Okay.
I, I wanted to just ask one question.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Missy.
In, um, fi- 5240, in section V, that would be what we're looking at before. When it says, I just want to be clear, okay? It says the Board of Education prohibits advertising. So if we take that part out that's underlined, wouldn't that say then that those could be advertised?
No, we, we, our, our current policy prohibits any advertising that is vulgar, indecent, obscene, uh, advertises any product that is prohibited by minors. So, uh, our, our current policy in essence still prohibits this information.
But if we take that part out that's underlined, would that then cause someone to maybe be able to advertise that?
No, I don't think so.
Cause it says to prohibit advertisement and promotional activities. Only we've marked out promotional activities. So it looks like to me if you prohibited something, you had a policy to prohibit it, and then you take out.
Well, we would leave the strike through in. And so that, that part would.
Well, not the strike through, but the double underline.
The strike through would remain, and then the double underlines are not in our current policy now. And it is a clarification of the other, the previous words. It's just a clarification. It doesn't really add to it or take away from it. It just clarifies it. So in actual practice, it would not be affected.
Okay.
We're not going to allow advertisers to come in and pick on any groups of students.
Right. Right. And we don't want that.
We, we don't do that now, and it's, it's prohibited by our current policy. And it would be, it would just be clarified in the revisions, but it would still be prohibited. So either way, it's prohibited behavior.
But is the one that we're looking at right there, is that the one that the State Board of Education is the one that? But is the one that we're looking at right there, is that the one that the State Board of Education is the one that recommends? Recommends this one?
Yes.
With the double underlines, they recommend adding the double underline section.
Right, so that you couldn't advertise that, be against advertising.
Already against it, that's the whole point.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Indecent or obscene covered.
Legally, this is okay to take that out.
Well, what would be the, what would be the issue though with leaving this in? It's just saying that we're.
Can't advertise.
That it's, you can't do it anyway. It's just, I think it just spells it out in case there is any questions.
Right.
I think it puts it into our policy that, that that's there, that, and to me, it, it removes any gray area or any ideas that people might have if they could advertise something along those lines. And, and the double, the double underline section that we're talking about is the sex, including pregnancy, childbirth, sexual orientation, and gender identity. That is, that is new, I think, to the policy, and that's just saying that we can't advertise. And this is my opinion, Mr. Johnson, I mean, this is the way I see it. You'll feel free to correct me if I'm wrong. But it just says that we can't advertise anything along those lines. So, if anybody got an idea that they might, could advertise, at least it spells it out in our policy that they can't.
Right, and personal attacks, abusive language, and all that toward these people.
Right, well, it says, well, I'll just read from the beginning here. The Board of Education prohibits advertising that is vulgar, indecent, or obscene, contains libelous statements, personal attacks, or abusive language such as language defaming a person's character, race, religion, ethnic origin, sex, including pregnancy, childbirth, sexual orientation, and gender identity. So, I guess I'm looking at it as, as what would be wrong with leaving that in the policy to say that, you know, if, if a young, young lady is pregnant in school, that you can't advertise or, or abusive language or anything defaming that person, the young lady that would be pregnant at the time. That's the way I'm reading it, and I, and I may be all wrong about it, but, so I'm, I guess I'm struggling with, why, why should we even take it out? Why not just leave it in? And more, and go a little extra step in clarifying why we should have, you know, why they can't do those types of things.
Well, I, I think, I think you're right. The fact that those words are included in parentheses indicates to me that whether or not you have that phrase in there under Title IX and OCR regulations, use of the term sex includes those. So, what you're, you are correct, this is just basically being more detailed to say what is meant by the term sex. But, but current state and federal regulations include those categories in the definition of sexual discrimination. And the, and the one that's, that's mandatory, of course, is the one, section E on student privacy, on, on surveys of students. And we have a, you know, a separate policy that basically says the same thing. Forty-seven twenty.
So, what, from Mr. Johnson, if what I'm understanding is whether this is in there or not, the policy's still the same.
Exactly, we, we're going to be bound, but we're going to be bound to follow these regulations anyway.
Right.
I guess the question is, do you want to have it set forth in policy as specific as it is in the revision or not? I think from my standpoint, the legal effect is going to be the same either way. It may be more informative, I guess, to the general public if it's, if it's in the policy.
I think it's more transparency if we have it in the, in the policy, if we have it spelled out.
Right.
So, do we want to adopt it as this, this? We, we can, we can approve, I think in our approval, or in our action agenda, we have a, a spring policy update listed in our action. We can pull out the policy fifty-two forty until the next meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
That is correct, those are your options.
Okay, so we can either approve it in this form. If we approve in our action item B, the spring policy update, and we do not remove the fifty-two forty from that policy update, then it will be approved in the form that's written here in our discussion agenda, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so, board, do we have, I guess that's our choice, is we can pull it out and discuss it again at the next meeting? Or we can, we can approve it the way it's written here from Mr. Johnson?
I think we ought to pull it out for one more meeting and just discuss it a little further.
What changes are you wanting to make to it, so Mr. Johnson will know?
I sort of go along with Cheryl on this. When I see sex, I think of male and female. Instead of recognizing a whole bunch of different sexual orientations and stuff like that.
But it's not really spelling that out, it's just saying you can't advertise based on.
Those things.
Derogative things in any form, including that. It's not promoting it, it's saying that we're not going to tolerate anybody advertising in that manner.
Well, again, if, if somebody were to come in, and, and please forgive me, I'm trying to come up with an example. If, if somebody came in and wanted to do an advertising for something that says, and if you're a teenage mother, you should be ashamed of yourself, we're advertising this way. Where the current policy states family status. Whereas a superintendent, I would say, no way, you're not just picking on any of our kids, ever, in, in a mass media advertising campaign to go after any of our kids. Because whether I believe with you politically, ideologically, socially, any of those things, my job as superintendent, our job at Stokes County Schools is to educate each and every one of our students in a safe and caring environment. And so, I'm not, I would use the family status to prevent somebody from going after teenage moms. But if it's listed here, including pregnancy or childbirth, then they don't even have a gray area to try. It spells it out, this is there. Gender is already listed. And so, that is in our current policy, that you can't discriminate or have these advertisements that attacks a person based on a gender. Again, I'm not going to let somebody come in and attack any of our groups of students. But with sayings with, based on sexual identity or gender identity as well, that clarifies it. That takes out the gray area of, well, do you allow it just based on their birth gender or by their identifying? Either way, you're not picking on our students. This just spells it out.
Ms. Knight?
You know, I agree, like what Dr. Rice said, and, and again, also what Mr. Bryant said, is none of our students, for any form or fashion, should be picked on. I guess I didn't want to open up the door for other things, thinking from a parent's standpoint of, you know, does it open it up somehow for groups to, I don't know, want to target certain things? And that's why I wondered if leaving it as a general term was good. But then I also understand what Mr. Robertson's trying to say about, we'll spell it out, and there's no question. But, so.
You leave it ambiguous, they could. If you spell it out, they can't. So, I'm fine with the way it is.
Yeah, I can deal with spelling it out.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the policy that is written by Mr. Johnson here in our, in our discussion.
We're not promoting any of those, we are just not.
That's true.
We're allowing discrimination based on it.
Something that we shouldn't be.
Yes, right, I think our sincere concern was not allow for outside groups to promote or anything.
Well, I think this says that they can't do that.
Right, okay.
This won't make sure.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the policy fifty-two forty? So, when we get to, in our action agenda, this will be there. If you decide, if anybody decides they want to remove policy fifty-two forty, we can do so at the time, I would say we'll go with it, but that will be a board decision. Okay, discussion, agenda item E, discussion of current expense fund, eighth budget amendment number five.
Okay, this, this is a budget amendment for the school year that just ended. This is some additional revenue that we received unexpected for the vocational rehab program and also for Medicaid. So, we've set these up as accounts receivables to end that school year. Additional $22,075.53.
I can motion to move that one to action, I'll take the money.
Yeah.
All in favor? Okay, so that will be action item D, current expense fund, eighth budget amendment number five.
Thank you.
Okay, and that brings us to discussion item E, oh, I'm sorry, discussion item F.
Okay.
Discussion of S R two and S R three revisions, Ms. Moore?
Okay, your PRC one seventy-one, which is our S R two. This is where the board discussed at the last meeting to purchase math textbooks. And that has been approved by DPI. We went ahead and submitted that budget, and we have received approval. So, just wanted to make you aware that the math textbooks were approved to be part of the S R funding. Then from there, the one eighty-one, at our last meeting, we provided you the information. And then what's in yellow on the page is the amount of transfers that we moved from current expense to balance that budget. With those transfers, and then if you'll go over to your second page, and the projection of what we will use basically for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, that would leave unbudgeted two hundred fifty-three thousand two nineteen sixty-three for the S R three, PRC one eighty-one. You have any questions? And basically, the only change in the projected part, went ahead and tried to figure the salaries actually. And so, where before, I think I rounded off, I put the actual pennies in, because this will agree with the budget that's submitted to DPI, if the board approves. This is the one that's due by August fifteenth.
Okay, so, help me understand, I guess, Ms. Moore, the unbudgeted part of two fifty-three, two nineteen sixty-three, right? So, that's what we have, that we have not budgeted, we haven't found a home for that kind of, that amount of money. We also, but we still have some monies that we're going to be spending in the next couple of years, is that correct?
That's correct.
That if we decided to change the budget, we could change that, what we have it budgeted for.
It can be amended, yes, sir.
It can be amended, right. So, if we decided there was something that we have, and I'm not sure what, what we would have, that we said we want to spend S R funds on, that if we decided to change our mind, we could always change it and spend it on something else, as long as it was approved by DPI.
Right, and, for example, if we do not do anything with the unbudgeted this school year, when we come to twenty-three, twenty-four, at that point, we would include it at that point for you all to make a decision.
Okay, so going forward, how much is it that we have that we have budgeted, we haven't actually spent?
In this particular PRC, is that what you're asking me?
Yes.
Okay, once this is submitted like it is, then that would leave you the two fifty-three. If you leave the twenty-three, twenty-four projected like we're saying. So, we're anticipating all of this happening, what's above the yellow and what's included in the yellow for the year that we're in now.
Right.
But like the window project, the other project, how much is, how much is unspent but designated?
Well, your two fifty-three is.
I know that's, that's there, but I mean, like for the air purification system, that's a half a million.
That's gone, this is it.
So, this is the last.
So, some of that money we used to balance the budget, is that correct?
Well, what you done on that, we ended up doing textbooks for science. So, that took up most of the funding that you had in those, those areas. So, there is no money for air purification.
And then the, the, the money that we had for personnel, again, all of it's budgeted right now. But how much are we planning to spend in next school year's budget?
The twenty-three, twenty-four school year projected budget, is that what that would be?
All right, you're going to plan on, on the twenty-two, twenty-three, we had the two million, six sixty-four that was coming off from what was available, and then we done the transfers. So, the total projected budget for twenty-two, twenty-three is four million, one twenty-eight, oh seventy-one, forty-six. That's coming off of your seven million that we had available. Then you come along and you add the projection that we're planning for twenty-three, twenty-four, which will be in more detail when that time comes. That's another two million, eight sixty-three, two forty-seven. So, the total between the twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four comes to six million, nine ninety-one, three eighteen, forty-six, leaving the balance of two fifty-three, two nineteen sixty-three. Now, when we started, just to make it clear, the board did talk about doing the air purification and the windows. And if you know, we added the water coolers, and that's already come out, and it's included in this budget here. Of course, those items now, like I said, kind of disappeared because we did add a majority of the money, as the board talked about last meeting, for the textbooks for science.
This is S R fund.
Yes.
So, basically, you have the two fifty-three that could yet be discussed as to what we needed to do with it.
Okay.
But in next year's budget is two million, eight hundred sixty-three thousand, two forty-seven. So, like if the state came through and said, well, we're going to pay for summer school, then three hundred fifty thousand would now then be available. Or if we were unable to fill some, some people quit, and we were unable to fill those salaries, then those salaries would become available. So, in next year's budget, right now, we have about two point eight million.
Yes, it will be.
Well, I should.
And add the two fifty-three to it, yeah.
So, three million.
Yeah, and that will be in the more detail when that time comes for the board to look at, just like we've done the other.
Okay, all right, any other questions for Ms. Moore? Do we have everybody totally confused at this point?
I'm sorry, I'll be glad.
Ms. McGee, are you totally confused? That's exactly right. What would we do without Ms. Moore, right? Absolutely.
And how did we decide that the learning loss school allotment is broken down per school? Is it strictly?
By ADM.
By ADM.
Okay.
And we usually do not send that allotment out after the ten days. The principals had kind of requested in the past that they felt like that was fair to the schools, because it's the current ADM, so we'll be working on those after school starts to get it out. But if they want to start, they know they can, and we'll pay it from local till that time happens.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
But board, we do need this move to action because we have to submit that grant approved by the board.
Some move.
Second?
All in favor? So, this will be S R two and S R three revisions, it'll be action item E. That brings us to discussion item G, discussion of North Stokes High HVAC Building C. Mr. Goins?
Yes, board members, in C building at North Stokes, we have several air conditioning units that the best determination we come up with, it's just worn out. We've replaced expansion valves on them, cleaned coils, the inside coils, and they just were not cool. We've got one sent off to, we have to have a custom coil made to see if that's going to work. Well, in the meantime, we need a short-term solution. Mr. Jones and I met up there, and we felt like the best solution would be putting mini splits in. Put mini splits in seven classrooms, we're looking at somewhere around seventy-five to eighty thousand dollars. I'm trying to get some quotes now. Now, let me explain, that's with maintenance doing the electrical to cut back on cost. All the mechanical contractor will be doing, be putting any equipment in, the maintenance staff will be doing the electrical.
What size mini splits?
Five, four tons, and two, three tons.
And just to give you an idea, when y'all checked temperatures the other day, with everything running wide open, some rooms were seventy-seven, seventy-eight with no one in them. And the blinds shut.
In the afternoon, because our meeting was in the morning time, and I went back in the afternoon, and it was anywhere from seventy-nine to eighty-eight degrees, depending on the room you were in. There was a couple, one doesn't have any A C at all, it was, it was eighty, eighty-eight at the time.
So, these mini splits are a, not a short-term, but they are a long-term solution, right?
No.
No, it's a short-term.
Short-term.
So, what do we do when we get the H V A C backup?
Sir?
What happens when we get the H V A C backup in?
Well, we're going to try one coil, but it won't come in till after school starts, to see if that's going to work.
But what are we going to do with the mini splits that we're spending eighty thousand dollars for?
They would just be in place. They could be taken out if, if the coils, but the coils are going to cost us five thousand. A classroom is about as cheap with the mini splits in.
But why would we not just put the mini splits in and not the coils then?
Yeah, one or the other.
Yeah, it's not, it should be an either or, not a either and.
These coils are how old, Ricky?
Sir?
How old are these coils?
Equipment's thirty-four years old.
Thirty-four years old, mini split, seven, eight-year unit. That's one on the coils.
So, when we say it's not a long-term solution, it is kind of a long, it's a, it's a long-term Band-Aid, five to seven-year solution, right?
And they're not going to heat very good on extremely cold days, so they have no electric backup.
The one disadvantage, if you want to call it, some teachers would call it an advantage, these would not be tied into Johnson controls. So, what we feel like in maintenance, this is going to be a domino effect. Well, my air conditioner is not as cold as Mr. Tetter's, I, he's got a new one, I want one too, now mine's not working. So, now, the next teacher's going to say theirs is not working. So, that's the only thing that we, that we're worried about.
Mr. Goins, what's, uh, what's the other, if we replace the, is, is, uh, Building C, has it got one unit for the whole building currently?
It's one unit, uh, we call it a fan coil unit, sets in the floor, it's got the air conditioning coil and a hot water coil. So, it gets heating from the hot water and you're cooling from the D X with an outside unit.
So, if we replace that whole unit?
I don't know, without getting an engineer involved, because...
But is that the other solution besides...
To me, that's the long-term solution. We got thirty-four years out of that equipment, I don't think we'll get thirty-four years out of new equipment, but you're probably looking more towards twenty to twenty-five years.
So, if we replace that whole unit that's there now, that's lasted thirty or forty years, whatever it's lasted, how long will it take us to replace that unit? Do we have to order it, get a new unit in, replace it, is that a six-month process, a year process?
It would depend on the lead time on the equipment. And I, I've seen on these mini splits, I haven't gotten any lead times on the, on...
But what's your best, what's your best guesstimate on that?
Six months to a year. On, if you do the long-term solution, I'm hoping mini splits will be in stock, because that's a common size, a three and four tonner are a common size, most time they're in stock.
And we could get those in in the next month or so?
I think so. I'm still waiting to get one more bid back, so I can have my three bids.
So, we, we install those mini splits, and we got them in, uh, it takes us a year to replace the original unit that's there now? What would be the cost of that original unit, is that a five-hundred-thousand-dollar unit, or what's the cost on that?
You may be fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a classroom.
How many classrooms?
Eleven in that one building.
So, will the existing unit provide heat, if, even though it will not provide cooling?
Yes, they tend to heat pretty good, uh, that's why we think, we're, the only thing left on, on these air conditioning side of it is to replace the compressor.
Well, the mini splits for air and the old unit leave it in place for heat?
The mini splits be heat and air, but, uh...
But if they're not, if they don't keep up, we can go back to the old...
The hot water coils will heat better than the mini splits.
Are they more efficient? Would a hot water coil be more efficient than a mini split in the winter time?
Probably so in that building.
So, we just idle the mini splits and use them for, for cooling?
And for South County, had an issue at, uh, West Forsyth, wound up putting mini splits in the whole school basically because of the same issues. Can't get the equipment. And, uh, sad part is, they had to buy, Forsyth County had to buy the mini splits to get it down where they could afford it. Eighty thousand dollars, wouldn't touch it down there. One building had eight units, it was, uh, hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars. That was with the contractor providing electrical and, uh...
Mechanical.
Mechanical.
So, we may be a tad bit short at eighty-five thousand.
Sir, I can't hear with the air conditioners running, I'm sorry.
We, we may be a tad bit short at eighty-five thousand.
We're going to be close.
You're giving me a heart attack.
Well, I can't tell, I've already got one bid back.
Mr. Goins?
Do you know what that bid, have you opened that bid? Have you opened that bid?
This is informal, we don't have to, we don't have to...
Okay, have you looked at that bid?
Yeah, that's why I say, I think we're going to give it around eighty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Goins, if the, uh, with the, uh, mini, we put the mini splits in, okay, if we install these mini splits in these eight classrooms, whatever it is?
Seven classrooms.
Seven classrooms, and then, uh, we, we replace the main unit, uh, over the next six months or a year? Uh, can we take those mini splits out and maybe use them in different locations if we need them? So, it's not like we're just putting them in there for six months and spending that money for six months, and it's all wasted, correct?
Correct. You'd have the material, but you'd, the, the installation cost, you know, you wouldn't get back, but...
But...
But you'll also have modifications to the walls that you'll have holes in.
Little three-inch hole.
I mean, me personally, I'm saying put the mini splits in, run them in the summertime, and run the...
Old unit in the winter time.
Old unit in the winter time, without having to replace anything.
Yeah.
And you should double the life of your mini split, because you're only running it fifty percent as much, so if we get ten to twelve years out.
The problem is the coils that he's talking about. They're going to, if the refrigeration coil is in bad shape, the inside of that hot water coil is going to be in bad shape too.
Well, the, the problem we're having is the reason, one reason we have to replace this unit, is the hot water coil was leaking. And it's so thin that you can't repair it. When you touch it with a torch, it's just like toilet paper with a lighter, it just, it's just gone. It's just so thin, there's nothing there to sort it up. The one we ordered coil for, it's actually the hot water coil is the issue, but this, the way this unit's made, the hot water coil and the D X coil is made together in one package, it goes in the unit. So, it's the hot water coil that's really the issue, is, is why we sent this coil off.
So, I guess what you're telling us then is the, uh, that we don't have a whole lot of choice but to do the mini splits for the time being?
That's, that's our only option at this point.
That's your recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
You need this move to action?
You want to move, move this to action?
Yes, that'd be great, then I could move forward soon, I should have my other bids by the end of this week.
Well, if not, he could just pay for it out of your emergency fund, right?
Yes, but we need board approval. But it's above my threshold of approval, so we would need board, board approval, board approval to spend it.
You know, fine, we'll spend it for ten years, I mean, but let's face it, the school is like every other school we have in Stokes County. It's about to have its, what, eightieth birthday? Built in sixty-three?
A lot of our equipment's around that same age.
Yeah. I mean, I, I just don't see spending a, a, buying a thirty-year fix for an eighty-year-old building.
Right.
I agree.
We get ten, we're lucky.
A whole lot more of this, a whole lot more of it. I make a motion that we move that to action.
You go, Mr. H VAC.
I'll second Mr. H VAC.
Okay, all, all, and now, this is the, uh...
Mini splits. North Stokes.
We're going to install seven, seven mini splits, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all in favor? So, this will be action item F, uh, North Stokes High H VAC Building C installs seven mini splits. Okay, so this will be, uh, action, uh, discussion item H, discussion of additional capital outlay budget items, Mr. Goins.
Yes, board members, in your packet, you should have the, a copy of the, uh, capital outlay budget. If you look down, I, uh, y'all approved through number item twenty-two, uh, that was approved on June the twenty-seventh, it came to two million, uh, sixty-three thousand. On the second page, you should look down in items forty-six, forty-eight, I've got them listed there as additional projects that we request, that comes to ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars. If you approve those, that would leave our balance still at one million five hundred two thousand and five hundred dollars. And then the, the remaining items are listed, uh, on down below that on the second page and third page, in case the board would like to add the lead, just open for discussion.
Okay, and I'd, and I'd spoken with Mr. Goins about this, uh, I think it'd be a good idea for us to go ahead, and he's picked out ten items here uh, that are all fairly low in a, in budget numbers, that I think would make a, 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 a lot, a large difference to the school. Uh, for example, one of them is the Early College, I know when we did our facilities tour, uh, the kids would walk, uh, more or less a straight line from the Forsyth Tech building down to Early College, through the grass, uh, and, and one thing at the Early College had a request that there was a sidewalk. And if we did a sidewalk there for, uh, the estimated cost of thirty-five hundred dollars, uh, it reduced the tracking of dirt, mud into the buildings. Uh, so there's ten items here, some of them are a little bit more expensive than that, uh, but I think it would make a big difference to those schools. And we can, uh, we can check off about ten of those items off of our, our capital budget. So, uh, any questions for Mr. Goins on any of these?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add, this was a team effort, Dr. Rice, Mr. Jones, Allett, I, and Richie Almet, and discussed all these projects, so it was a team effort.
What is the West Oaks metal siding building?
They was wanting that to, uh, uh, storage building to store the new track equipment in. He put metal siding, but we, we, I told him, that's the way, the original description was written, but we couldn't find one with metal side when I bid it. They were all like wooden siding. I called two different people.
You're talking about just like a storage shed?
Storage building to put the hurdles, that kind of things in there.
Yeah, just storage sheds, just one you buy and roll off, level up.
Could you not get a, like, enclosed carport?
Was wanting something a little bit more secure since they was, had all that hot dollar equipment in it. I think that's why he was on metal.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, I mean, you get one of those enclosed carports, it's, it's metal and it's more durable and it's, I mean, with doors and everything.
That's what the principal requested originally when we...
I mean, follow us in, Carolina carports, and they'll, I mean, they'll have it up in a day.
How, how big a building were they wanting?
Well, I, I can tell you this, and it would probably be easier to put a carport, I mean, a metal building in a carport, it sounds cheaper, but I'm trying to put the shelter up at Sandy Ridge, and I'm going to have to get an engineer to sign off to put it on a concrete slab or pour a footing that's twelve, sixteen inches wide and twelve inches deep to set it on, through the inspections department. So, it'd be easier to buy a building and, and roll it off there and set it up and anchor it down than it would be to, to, to put a carport, a metal carport. We put a metal carport, we might pour a footing for it.
I'm just going by the fact that if you're trying to take the high jump mats or the pole vault mallets in and out, you've got to have a really big door. And you can't get a really big door on a roll-up carport, because they can only be eight feet wide.
They can be fourteen-foot wide a building, if you haul down the road. I bought one.
Fourteen, how big's the door on it?
Well, I've got mine with barn doors, I could, got a roll-up door in one end, if I'd have wanted it that way.
I mean, I'm just...
You, the fourteen was a maximum width, thirty, hold me to this, I think it was twenty-eight or thirty-two was the maximum length.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just trying to get something that's a little more rugged and, and we're not going to have to maintain for the next twenty years. Because the, the wood, once you got to paint, everything else.
Right.
Well, I've looked at some of his history on painting. I think that's why he wanted metal siding, it was less maintenance on the metal siding.
Yeah, this is not a wood building here.
Our history on painting has not been that great.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Goins?
Customs could paint that, and they don't have to have certification to paint that.
So, we have, uh, we have the budget item listed at thirteen thousand, so, uh, I would suggest that, uh, you use your good judgment.
Sir?
Uh, so we have, the budget item is listed at thirteen thousand for that metal building, metal sided building, I would say you use your good judgment. And whatever y'all can come up with, as long as it stays, uh, fairly close to that budget item, then I think we'd be okay with it, that's, uh, we trust your judgment on that.
Well, I appreciate that, thank you very much.
And you do what you feel is right, and, uh, and I'm sure it will turn out nice.
Just make sure you work with the principal and A D, so that we'll get a usable structure.
Okay, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Goins?
I do, I have a...
Ms. Messick?
I'm not really trying to throw a monkey wrench in all this nice stuff that you have, uh, laid out for us, and I really think all these things are needed. But I had, um, before, talked about the, um, school bus cameras, because we had that incident with the student at South Stokes, trying to cross the road, and that car going by, and that student jumping back. And so, if we had had, um, school bus camera on there, they would have been able to have tracked that fellow down sooner. And the only reason I understand that that person was caught was because of the diligence of a state trooper. Is that right?
Mr. Tetter have to answer that question, I, I...
Well, anyway, didn't he go methodically through the community to try to find that car? But had we had these, um, school bus cameras, that would have taken the picture or the image so that we could have found that person sooner. So, I would like to propose that we, um, get the school bus cameras as Mr. Tetter had, um, brought before, so, about a month or so ago. So, I talked to him today, and he said that if we got fifty-six cameras, is that right? That'd be, you go ahead.
Yeah, we, to clarify, we have cameras on all of our buses. The incident that happened, it happened to a bus that did not have a stop-arm camera, the camera on the side of the bus. So, we had to do the investigating and, and track down the car using the camera that was in the windshield, which was less than ideal. And we have a good relationship with the State Highway Patrol, they're great with us, they, they worked with us one-on-one. It really was very fortunate that he tracked down the person as quickly as he did, he was in the right place at the right time. Uh, had we had a stop-arm camera on the side of that bus, I feel very confident that I would have been able to give a license plate number to him in just a few minutes, uh, instead of trying to figure out the kind of car and all that. So, I think it does give us an added level of accountability for the drivers in our community. Um, as I told, uh, Ms. Messick earlier today, short of a brick wall, nothing is going to keep it from happening. Um, but if we can hold drivers accountable for their actions, at least it won't happen twice with the same one, most likely. Uh, we have fifty-six, going into this upcoming school year, we have fifty-six routed school buses. Uh, some of our buses already have stop-arm cameras on them, they're from a different provider, a camera company called Seon. Uh, we are looking to move towards Angel Trax exclusively, it's a lot easier for our school administrators to use. We would like to have one system, so we don't have two separate hard drives, two separate readers, for obvious reasons. Um, so, we're, we're looking going forward to move to all Angel Trax, because we like them better. But I, I am not advocating removing Seon cameras from buses to replace them, because they do work well, it's just two different systems. Um, but I'll entertain any questions that you might have.
In your last presentation, how had you proposed paying for them, remind me?
Uh, a, a board member approached me about possible solutions.
Okay, okay.
It really wasn't built into any type of budget that I had, and I, I hadn't really discussed it with Ms. Moore or anyone else of how to pay for it. It was just a, a thing that was out there that I think would benefit our district.
I approached Mr. Tetter today, because I really do want to get those Angel Trax, um, cameras on the sto- the bus arms, the stop arms.
Yeah, there, it's two separate cam, th- this vendor, there's dozens of vendors. It's a camera at the front of the bus pointing backwards, and a camera at the back of the bus pointing forward, so it catches both directions of a driver's face, the front of the car, as well as a license plate.
And if the, somebody passes a bus illegally. And it would be fifty, approximately fifty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars. And I honestly think this is the time to get something like that, because we have a million five hundred, two thousand five hundred dollars in our, uh, capital fund balance, and I don't feel like that's that much to take out of that.
So, I, I would be remiss if I didn't say that, that quote was, is however many weeks old, you, you know what supply chain has done. There's a very real possibility it'll come in over that number.
A little bit, I'm sure, over, but not that much.
And if, if it, if that's the board's desire, I'll reach out and find out what an updated, um, price quote would be, and I can get that back to you.
Roughly, we're looking at a thousand dollars a bus, roughly. The camera is three fifty-one ninety-two, you would need two of those, there's a two-hundred-and-thirty-dollar installation cost. Uh, so, roughly, you're talking ballpark of a thousand dollars a piece. So roughly, you're talking ballpark of a thousand dollars apiece.
On that quote, yes.
For that quote, that quote was fifty-two three seventy-one for fifty-six system.
Yes.
So just, you know, slightly under a thousand dollars each at that point. There, there's two possible funding streams, Ms. Moore, you feel free to correct me at, at any time, we're talking finances. We could use capital funding for that because of the price point of the cameras. If you used school bus funds, the following year, you would be reimbursed by, you're reimbursed in a formula based on what you spent originally. So if you are, if we spend fifty-two thousand dollars, the state would reimburse us, if we're at eighty-five percent proficiency, efficiency rating, would reimburse eighty-five percent of that fifty-two. Mr. Tetter said it's gonna be higher this year, I want to see that number on the report.
It was eighty-two percent last year.
Well, I want to see that number before I quote anything, I under-promise, over-deliver. Learn that lesson, make everybody happy when you bring in that number, not disappointed.
I will say there's a possibility we would not need to do fifty-six, as we've quoted, because we parked eight buses over the summer.
So what I'm saying is if we use school bus funds, which would get into some of our savings with current expense, but we would be reimbursed at over eighty percent of that. So we would spend, only have to spend twenty percent locally in the long run, or we could spend a hundred percent of it out of capital.
So the way, the way our allotments work is any expansion that you make this year comes out of local. However, the next year, they see that's how much you spent, that becomes your allotment. And they multiply that by whatever your efficiency rating is, ours is currently eighty-two percent, so we get eighty-two percent of that allotment.
Back.
Back.
And that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, we need to do what we can to maximize our reimbursement.
Ten thousand dollars?
From, just speaking in my communication with other directors, many of the directors in my position in other districts, one of their main goals is to increase their budget. The, the resistance that you may run into is the first year that you increase that budget, it comes out of local. So when it goes to me from local, it's coming out of something else, out of a classroom, whatever, and I understand that. So we try to be very respectful of how we use money. I mean, that's what some people say.
So fifty, fifty-four thousand, fifty-six thousand out of capital, or potentially a year down the road, it would net out to about eleven thousand out of local.
Well, that's not bad.
Okay, so how do we make that motion?
Well, I, I think probably the best bet would be to let Mr. Tetter get more current information and.
I'll be happy to bring an updated quote to the next. I'll, I'll figure out the exact number of cameras that we do need. When we made that quote, it was fifty-six. Having parked eight buses over the summer to become more efficient and eliminate routes, there's a possibility we don't need fifty-six anymore. Because some of those parked yellow buses, I will bring forward later to convert more activity buses. So, but I'll get an exact number and then.
How long do you think it'd take to put these cameras on?
I couldn't even speculate, because it's a, it's a wiring harness. That's why they have to install it, because it's a, it's a pretty intricate wiring harness that goes through the side of the bus.
To the next meeting.
But I, I can find out.
So if we delay it to the next meeting, and that'll delay getting the cameras.
I feel confident I would never, I wouldn't be able to get them in before school starts.
You won't?
Oh, I, I would be stunned if I could get an agreement to do that.
But the reality is, is two weeks is two weeks.
Yeah.
So if we approved it tonight, and it was October first, if we wait two weeks, it'll be October fifteenth.
Correct, and, and I.
So two weeks is two weeks, but.
Whatever, whatever you feel comfortable doing, I can, I can have you a quote tomorrow morning. I can reach out to our rep at Angel Tracks and get the quote, and we can go forward however you decide. And I'm pretty persistent, if some people will tell you, so I.
But I would be hesitant.
I'll get them installed as fast as we can.
But I would be hesitant on the record to approve a certain dollar amount, because that may be what the folks show up as.
So it seems to be a consensus to move forward with a quote, I suppose.
We can do this, because we can do this informal quotes at fifty-six thousand, correct? Up to ninety. We can do informal quotes, so we can, we can get those back pretty quick, I would say.
We can go forward however you see fit.
Well, I, I do see it as two separate issues, I think, to what we have brought forward tonight with the capital outlay budget items here that we were discussing. And then we can also add a, we can add the school bus cameras.
You have the board's interest in upgrading the cameras.
Yes.
Potential funding stream to be determined.
So what I would recommend is Mr. Tetter bring forth at our next meeting the details, more updated details, that's something we can put on the agenda and approve and move forward with it. And then in, in the next two weeks, maybe you can be working so that once, once we approve it, you'll be ready to order them.
Yeah, I'd be happy to.
If we approved it tonight, you're not gonna order them in the morning, probably, anyway.
Probably not, because I, I, we have to go back, I have to talk with Steve about how many we actually need. But from the time we wrote that quote to now, would not be the same amount of buses.
We can get all the legwork done, the order ready, so that if you approve it at the next meeting, that next morning, it can go off.
Yeah, I'll, I'll definitely have everything you need by the end of the week.
So instead of losing actually two weeks, we may lose a week.
Yeah, I'll have everything for you by the end of the week.
Ms. Messick, would that be okay with you?
I'll try to get an idea of installation timeline, too. They should be able to give me an idea, we're three weeks out, we're two months out, like, they should be able to tell me.
I just, I just think it would be better if we have our information correct.
Yes.
It's more prudent as a board, I think, if we do that, than we would tonight to just approve whatever.
It would worry me to approve that total, because I know the bus number is not correct, and I don't know that the cost of the supplies and the equipment is correct.
Absolutely.
Because that was however many weeks ago that quote was.
Well, just a couple of weeks ago, but I don't want you to approve, you know, say, oh, this bus has got one, it's working pretty good now, and it's an old system. I'd rather go ahead and put a new system in the buses while we have the money to do it and you can get the reimbursement, than to say, well, these buses here has, has cameras, but, you know, they're not working that great, but, oh, they're working. You know, I'd like for them to be in top order.
I understand. The, I feel very confident in both camera systems that we do have, one is simply easier to use for our school administrators.
Well, that's what you had told me, so that's why I wanted to get those Angel Tracks.
But as, as far as functionality and use of us being able to use them, I, I feel comfortable with both of them. I would just like to move to one system uniformly across the district.
Well, that's what I'm trying to help get.
Mr. Tetter, if you would, just bring that information to our next meeting.
Happy to.
Okay, that's actually not anything, it's on our agenda for tonight, but I do appreciate Ms. Messick bringing it up, and hopefully we can move forward with that at our next meeting.
Thank you.
I've got one other thing, Mr. Tetter, before you go. In, on down the list, there was a awning or cover for the fuel pumps. I mean, I'm just, I, I get concerned when our drivers are standing out trying to fuel things in the rain, and especially our three-built I.D.C. with lightning.
There's a lot of different ways to look at this quote, too. And frankly, after talking to Ricky, I agree with him, it's probably considerably more than that is, if we do it the way it should be done. The way I want it done, there's two problems. One is that the fuel truck driver has to bulk the fuel truck standing out in the elements. I mean, there's no awning, there's no cover, ninety-five degrees in the sun, he's there, in the rain, forty degrees, he's there. We could put some type of small shelter over that. Drivers pull up to fuel there at the bus garage, it's completely open. The biggest problem that I see is, it got me today on my way here, my hand smells like gas now. When you get over about eighty degrees outside, and anybody that's come to the bus garage to fuel can tell you, when it heats up outside, those pipes are exposed to the sun, and it only does it on our unleaded fuel, not our diesel. But it heats up, the pressure builds, and it pumps at a trickle. Steve said they've had people come out, change pipes, change the pedestal, they've changed all these different parts. Cold, yeah, it just keeps going. And if you try to jam it in there like you would normally do on a regular day, it spews everywhere. So we can get around it at the bus garage, because we just don't fuel in the afternoon, we just fuel in the mornings. But days like today where I was in and out of the office, and I forgot, and I needed to fuel before I came here, you know, you, and that seems like a trivial thing, but it does go all over the vehicles.
It's also a safety hazard.
It's not great, it goes everywhere. So what I would, if magic wand, I would like to cover our entire fuel system with enough space to park our fuel truck, tow truck, and service trucks under. Just a carport, open on all sides, just to pull in and get out of the, out of the elements. And enough to go over where the bulk tank is, that's gonna be expensive. So if we have to pare back, what I would like to do is cover, cover the pipes that lead to the fuel system and the pedestal that our fuel truck mechanic bulks his truck on. That's the bare minimum that I would like to do. Talked to Spevco today, the company that put the system in, and they gave us a quote, or gonna come out and give us a quote of what it will be to just insulate pipes, and to see if that helps. We'll, we're gonna go as cheap as we can to start.
Did you bring those numbers to us, because I'm not opposed to.
Happy to, yeah.
I mean, we value our, our fuel truck drivers as much as we do anybody.
Yeah, it's a, it's, it's a tough job in the rain.
Mr. Tetter, if you would, just bring those, bring that information back, we have next meeting.
Yeah, happy to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tetter. All right, Mr. Goins, any other, do we have any other on the capital outlay budget items that discussed here, the, the ten items?
No, that's the ones I would recommend to add to our capital budget list.
Okay.
Make a motion, move those to action.
I do have a question.
Oh, hold on, scratch that, I'm about to be.
Talking about the mini.
I was gonna ask about the mini split, she had to go back there, where, where's the funding coming from for that, out of capital?
Well, it take away from your one point five, I just want us to have the same understanding.
Yes, I think it would.
Because of urgency, it might take every bit of the hundred thousand that we have. Okay, so that, that figure will change then with the board, we'll revise that and bring it down to whatever your quote comes into.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's a hundred and eighty-five thousand-ish that we're taking from that number, that one point five million number.
Correct. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
Do the, have a motion to move that to action?
There was.
Second. All in favor? So that will be action item G, additional capital outlay budget items. And that brings us to our last discussion agenda item, I, that was added tonight, discussion of schools' needs-based capital grant. Dr. Rice?
Board, if you remember a couple of years ago, when Dr. Taylor was here, he brought a proposal for the school needs-based capital grant to do some projects. At that, later in that discussion, we learned that that would take away from future lottery earnings. And we couldn't do that, because ours are designated. Well, now they have opened up a new pot of money that does not affect that. That money can be used from up to thirty million dollars to build a new elementary school, up to fifty million dollars to build a new high school. Preference is given if you have advanced planning, engineer drawings, blueprints, things like, of that nature, which of course, we're not ready for that today. But I did notice some other things that were on the list of awards that had been granted in previous cycles that we could benefit from today, and with talking with DPI last week when I was down there, would not inhibit us from receiving future awards, especially if there was at least a year gap. But some districts have been using it to put roofs on buildings. Well, not counting what we have already budgeted for this year, and talking with Mr. Goins, Mr. Roberts, we have about five and a half million dollars in other roofs that are currently on our list that are also long-term solutions, if you will. Piney Grove, West Oaks High School, Meadow Brook Academy, things like that. There are some buildings at North that need it, but, you know, one, I'm sorry. Walnut Cove Elementary. And there are some at North that we, but we've also talked about potentially, if consol, possibly as a stopgap to extend the life of North, possibly putting Piney Grove and North together. So again, don't think it would be a waste of money right now in that regard. But there is the potential to submit a grant for about five and a half million dollars to pay off our roofing needs that we're looking seven, eight years out, which would free up all of our capital money at that point to be used for other projects and not roofs. And so I'm not here tonight to ask for official approval of that, just consensus to pursue that with that in mind. And again, if this year, after we do our facility studies, get together with the commissioners, if we determine that we want to build an elementary middle or high to help with a plan, a long-range plan of consolidation and/or not, just a replacement, we could still have the opportunity, again, up to thirty million dollars for an elementary school, up to fifty million dollars to a high school. So we could still do that in the future. They said we could do that now if we wanted, even with just a joint letter from the commissioners and the board. Because I asked them, I said, you know, the way it looks now in the application, you have to be ready to go, because we're not gonna spend at least a hundred million, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars on blueprints for a building if we don't have funding for it. That would be just throwing a hundred thousand dollars in, in the, in the trash. And I said, you know, we're not gonna invest that kind of money unless we know that we can actually build it. And I said, and if we already get the money, then, you know, if the commissioner's already gonna pay for it, could we ask for this to then not use the commissioner money? And they said, if you got together and wrote a joint letter and say, yes, this is our plan, that this is what we wanna do, you could be approved for this. But my suggestion would be to try to go with a roofing project now, and then look, after we get our facility studies done, to look at what would a logical step be for a thirty to fifty billion dollar grant in the future.
You said could be approved, so is this a very competitive?
It is competitive. There are districts that were not awarded this in the last cycle, and.
Are there some that are never awarded when they?
Some that are never, we are on the list for we are approved to be a candidate. There is a five percent match that's required, so if we did five and a half million dollars, or we say two hundred and fifty thousand? About two hundred and fifty thousand would be the required match, which, again, I believe that we could swing or tell the commissioners that that would be a great investment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to save five million, five and a half million dollars in roofing expenses in the next few years. So with your consensus blessing tonight, we would put together that list, work on that grant application, get you to approve that at the next meeting, and we could still meet the deadline of September first.
Is H V A C a possible also?
I've not seen that listed. I've seen new constructions, I've seen roofs, I've seen renovations. I've not seen just H V A C listed specifically. I could certainly ask that question. Dr. Taylor at, not Brian Taylor, but Dr. Robert Taylor at DPI is expecting me to call him later this week, pending tonight's conversation, to find out what other things may be approved. Again, there is a five percent match, but.
Roofs and H V A C, because those are our two biggest hurdles as we speak.
Well, even if we just do, even if we just get a grant for roof, then that, that's, I mean, that's a big hit right there.
Lift the burden.
Oh, it's a huge hit, I'm just looking at all the numbers that Richie had put, you know, nineteen school, thirty-year-old air conditioner. Well, the problem with that is, while we have these numbers here, it's not specific numbers. Where, you know, it's hard to say exactly what, when, the day Piney Grove goes out, how much it will cost us on that day, and what exactly we would replace right now if we had that funding. But with a roof, with our square footage and engineering cost, we can give a pretty good estimate of what that is. The other one that crossed our mind would be asphalt. South Stokes is busting up, the entrance to West Stokes is busting up, Germanton, we know, is busting up. Those would be the three biggest ones that also potentially could be done. Again, I've not seen an asphalt project approved, but those are some that we could come up with concrete, no pun intended, numbers, asphalt numbers, roofing numbers, that we could write into a grant relatively easy, I believe.
Okay.
But with your consensus, we'll start pursuing this and bring a formalized full grant proposal to you at the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay, great.
I think it would be, I think it would be prudent for the board to approve this, or give consensus to it. And I think as a board, we do have to start looking and making future plans. I think, I think it's, if, if we're not doing that. I think, I think it's, uh, if, if we're not doing that, uh, we all, you know, we've been saying forever, we have, uh, uh, a lot of, you know, a lot of tough decisions coming, and I think it's time that we, you know, we're going to have to get into those tough decisions. And I think this extra funding helps us. Uh, you know, we have a lot of challenges in front of us, and, um, any, any extra additional funding that we can get from DPI to help with these items is a bonus. So to have the board consensus that we can send Dr. Rice off to work on this and, and come up with a, a solution or a grant, maybe a proposal at the next meeting. Okay?
I'm.
So, Dr. Rice, I think we have consensus on that. Just, uh, come back to us at the next meeting with some ideas and, and let us know what we need to do, and we'll, and we'll do all we can. Okay?
And I know sometimes there's questions, well, why did he go to Raleigh? Well, there may be five and a half million reasons why I went to Raleigh this, this time.
Right.
Uh, so we're constantly looking for ways to improve the school, uh, when we go out of the district.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Okay, that brings us to our action agenda. Uh, action item A, approval of personnel and coaching. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Action item B, approval of spring policy update. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Action item C, lottery application for Nancy Reynolds Elementary School. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All, do I have a second?
I'll second this one.
All in favor? Aye. Action item D, current expense fund eight, budget amendment number five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Action item E, S R two and S R three revisions.
I make a motion for S R two and S R three revisions.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Action item F, North Stokes High HVAC building C, install seven mini splits.
I'll make a motion to install seven mini splits at North Stokes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Action item G, additional capital outlay budget items.
I make a motion to approve the additional budget, capital budget items.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, that brings us to information and announcements. Mr. Jones?
Chairman Robertson and board members, I want to draw your attention to a few things. Uh, our next board meeting will be held on the twenty-second here in the administrative office at six P.M. I also want to highlight that today was the first day of school for our early college students. It was great to have them back in the buildings. I think they had a great first day, and look forward to welcoming our other students on the twenty-ninth. Uh, the open house dates are listed there, uh, for your viewing also. And do want to point out convocation will be held on Friday, August nineteenth. That's from one to two-thirty at West Stokes High School. In addition to that, you have fundraising requests, field trips, and calendars for your information, and I also place fall athletic schedules at your, at your place this evening. That's all I had. Ms. Robertson.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Board, I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.
Everyone have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Take care, Fred. Have a good one.
Thank you. I wanted to ask about that convocation. Are we going to have any?